I can't, we won't back there.
We'll do it after.
Okay, I can.
Thank you.
I'll call the maiden order.
Scott, would you like to someplace?
Testify, and I'm going to say some Americans in the Republic for which the sentence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, can I get the bank balances?
General account, we have eight hundred and three thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents. The general sewer account is ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Municipal court fund is thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, eighty-nine cents. The corrections fund is seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Cash bond, seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and six cents. Judicial training fund is three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Four-five cent gas, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and fourteen cents. Seven cent gas, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and, I'm sorry, five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Rebuild Alabama, eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Sewer customer deposits, forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and forty-five cents. Sewer capital, a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and eight cents. CDB grants, sixty-five dollars, twenty-five cents. American Rescue Plan Act, sixty-nine thousand, forty-five dollars, seventy cents. Capital savings, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. For total funds of one million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and eighteen cents.
All right, I have a motion to accept the bank balances in minutes and residence, please.
Motion.
Got a motion from Larry, do I have a second? Second from Terry, all in favor? All right, all right. So first item on the agenda is Resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero three, accepting bid for H-Vac investment at fire hall. All right, let's see, so that is, uh... Accepting a bid from... Durham. AC. That's where we're going to go, because that's what we have all our service being done now. For eighty-three hundred dollars. Any discussion on this? Scott, any discussion? Terry?
No.
James?
Yes, sir, I'm good with that.
Terry?
Good.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero three.
Motion.
Got a motion from Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Larry, all in favor? All right, all right. Uh, Resolution number... I'm sorry?
Could just make mention that the decision on that bid being awarded was done after all were reviewed and all the factors that need to be considered in the open bidding process were undertaken.
Okay.
I should clarify my own... Uh, the motion to accept Durham services, be it, I should have worried that, sorry about that.
That's all right.
So...
Based on all the factors that were there and what was considered?
Yes, we just looked at all of it and we decided that my motion to accept Durham services would be it.
Okay. All right, we had a first and a second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right. So we've got Resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero four, which is recommendation of the Vatman Board.
Table that to...
We've got somebody from the Vatman Board here to present it.
Yes, we, uh, we all unanimously voted to have the trailer foregone. It was our recommendation for the council. So we're all unanimous in that decision. You may have any questions? That's...
I don't think we disagree at all, but I'll advise the council during the work session, if the lady who owns the property can take care of it herself first, that's a better suggestion than the town getting involved immediately.
Have somebody haul off the trailer and reuse it.
Uh, I think that was, I think that was the way council advised us.
Yeah. And we had an opportunity to speak with one of the real property owners, not the structure, or not the, um, movable owners, or not, not the movable structure, but the real property that the movable structure is located on. And, you know, there was a, uh, the owners of record were provided proper notice.
Thank you.
And we've had an opportunity to speak with Herb and Susan. And it's mine, I just ask, you know, that the minutes be reflected, that there's, um, three individuals on real property, you being one, and you did consent after appearing after proper notice, and that one party resides out of state and then one whereabouts is unknown?
Yes.
Okay. And you're not aware of any sort of, um, court orders that would, um, prevent the individual out of state from making decisions on their own? Okay. But we did have a conversation that, um, I, our recommendation would be if the, um, recommendation of the Vatman Board, which we feel is proper, if maybe set a reasonable timeframe, thirty days, for said structure to be removed, give them a chance. We had a conversation about the implications of the city undertaking the actions for removal and how that could be potentially negatively impactful financially down the road as it relates to the real property. And if the council and the mayor were to find it to be appropriate to delay for a reasonable period of time and allow them to remove, that, that, we would recommend that.
And we just asked to give them sixty days to get it off, two, a full two months. If they don't, then we revisit this for the city taking action?
Yeah, it's just gonna take a few days to find somebody to come and look at it and assess whether they want it or not, so.
I, I think we defer to the council.
Defer to the council's time here.
I said sixty days, I agree with, or more, or...
A reasonable period of time.
Sixty, I wanted sixty.
If they come to us and they've got several people bidding on, want it, and they're actually working, can show us what they're doing, we may extend that sixty days. But if, you know, we know for a fact they've talked to Joe's trailer removal and he's working out the logistics of it, and we know that for a fact, then we could extend that beyond that. But if nothing's being done in sixty days, then we will take it.
And with the council allowing open comments in this session, do you have any questions or is there anything that we can fully applaud you of? I can't understand after this session is finished, but there's going to be a council with appointed writer.
So a question would be, could we vote on this tonight and get it off our plate?
Yes.
That says that if there's no action or unsuitable action within sixty days?
No later than sixty.
No later than sixty days, if there's been zero action movement, zero action taken within sixty days on behalf of the owner, that the city can proceed?
I wouldn't say zero action. You could say looking.
Fix the right language, yeah.
Looking.
The language isn't right.
I, I think if it was, um, the recommendation of the Vatman Board, if it is in fact...
If no action is taken?
If no, if no action is undertaken, uh, within sixty days of the vote, then the city will...
Move forward.
Move forward with removal, something to that effect.
All right.
I think that's reasonable.
So you want to use that list capture?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a sneaky suspicion that when the draft is sent out for consideration, Tom will try to fix something, but we just move on from that.
Okay.
Yeah, would you mind just read back what, what we captured, how we're going to vote on it, if you don't mind?
You said that if the owner does not take action within sixty days to have the trailer removed, then the city will proceed with action to have it removed?
And, and, and the cost being borne by the possessori, by the real property possessor?
Real property owner. Right.
Yeah, I think there's the resolution...
I think the rest of the language in there, I think, at least.
Okay. All right, so I have, um, a motion on Resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero four, modified per Laura's rating.
With those changes, I'll motion.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Terry, all in favor? All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt and tell you why our councilman, Mr. Ryder's not here? He is at the hospital waiting on some type of surgery.
Okay.
He texted me back, let me know that.
Mm-hmm.
Just make it, you know?
Sorry, we should be testing.
Yeah, I'm thinking about it.
Any matter of prayers?
He's having a pacemaker, he just texted back.
That's important.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that was the agenda of the... All right, so we've got a, uh... We received a letter from the University of Alabama Continuing Education, addressed to me, says, "On behalf of the University Partnership for Alabama Continuing Education and the Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police, I take great pleasure in announcing that Chief Jason Dobbins has completed two hundred and forty hours of training in the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Program. Chief Dobbins was awarded his two hundred and forty hour certification in law enforcement on February sixteen, twenty twenty-three, at the Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police Conference in Montgomery, Alabama. This four-level program developed by the Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police is supported by the Alabama Peace Officers Standards and Training Commission, APOS. The program was developed to prescribe a standard of excellence in the law enforcement profession, and certainly Chief Dobbins has reached that standard. He is among an elite group of Alabama chiefs that have earned this honor. Chiefs accepted into this prestigious program must complete many hours of training in courses such as leadership skills, human relations, internal personnel policies, external environmental issues, and communications." So, thank you, Jason.
Thank you, officer. Glad you do it.
So, we discussed the bulk trash truck work session, you aren't here, so we probably need to... We probably need to go back over that at the next session if we can, we can get everybody here to work today. All right, so we've got a proclamation, Fair Housing Month for April twenty twenty-three. All right, it says, "Whereas the month of April is recognized through the United States and the State of Alabama as Fair Housing Month, and whereas Title VIII of the Civil Rights of nineteen sixty-eight has amended, set forth in a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or disability, and whereas the City of Owens Crossroads and the State of Alabama continues to affirmatively further fair housing for its citizens. Now therefore, I, Tony Craig, Mayor of the City of Owens Crossroads, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Fair Housing Month in Owens Crossroads, Alabama." All right. And then, we'll go around to the departments, Laurie, you got anything?
Um, as you'll see in the report, we have several homes, new homes being built currently. Permits for the period of January twenty-sixth through today are twenty-six thousand dollars, one hundred and six dollars and nine cents. We have the estimated value of homes being built in the area over nine million dollars.
Tricia, you got anything?
Um, my sewer reports included, I used the same billing information that I had on the last report for this one because the last one just happened to fall on the last day of the month. But of the forty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-six cents that I filled out as of February twenty-eighth, we have only received payments of thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. There are a hundred and eighty-nine past due accounts, that actually, most of them qualify under our guidelines of two or more months of being cut off the door. That's seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents that's out there. Looking at the business license departments, um, business licenses, it's a non, or it's an ongoing thing throughout the year, but the deadline for most businesses, regular business license, is January thirty-first, and the insurance occupational licenses is March thirty-first. So far, I've taken in sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents for business licenses and eighty-one thousand, ninety-seven dollars and forty-three cents for insurance occupational licenses, for a total of a hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-one cents.
Good, good. All right, ready to go, anything?
Um, my report is in there, and I believe the place department is working really hard to, um, go out and serve warrants, and so they're going to start keeping me more busy. So I'm really glad for what our officers are doing.
C.T., you got anything?
Working on the fire hall, closer and closer, I'll meet with Bruce tomorrow and find lots of locations for some damage.
Can we get a quote back on the shower stall, the marble panels?
We did, it was forty-something hundred dollars. Christie's got it.
So that's the cheaper, still, it's the cheaper options, too?
It was, because that included everything, including, we got, uh, the bid for the plumbing as well, Barry Thompson.
We'll, uh, close up at the next meeting? Or do we need to vote on it, or is it something we go forward with on it?
We're, we're good for right now.
Okay.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get Bruce in his office before I can get that project looked under, what, but we've got all the floors redone, they look really good, they've done a good job on that, so it's shining like a new pin.
Yeah, it's looking really good down there.
When we say marble, let's make sure everybody understands it.
Italian.
It's called marble.
Yeah.
Marble panels, yeah, we, we, we got the busy fire hall, we're doing, we're doing full marble slams in there.
Culture.
That's right, we're going...
Well, we learned marble. Well, I do think once that project gets started, it will go pretty quick, the quickest bearing, if it pour it, I'll gut it, but we can use the existing sheet rock that's there with their application, don't have to gut it. And Barry get the plumbing done, and the guy come out and make the final measurements.
I feel real nice.
I thank you, man.
Yeah, thank you.
Willie, you got anything?
Uh, the NCT finished stuff, just one shop just today, getting restocked and disinfected, so they're ready to go.
They need it Friday night.
Damn.
All right. T, if you got anything?
No, sir, I got nothing at all.
All right. Go around the table here, Terry, you got anything?
Just, we don't know this pretty weather we've had, are you getting a lot of the roads patched?
Yes, trying to.
Get a chance, right behind the station up there on Carpenter, Wilson, there's a whole big enough park Volkswagen in, way out patching, if you fill that one, I've had several people complain about that one, and the road going into Gingerwood, that's that little narrow road, the sides of it, it broke out, it's bad, people saying they can't beat another car without dropping a wheel on the holler, so, those two, I've, I've been fussed at most about, so appreciate you taking care of those. It's all that.
Okay. Scott, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Larry, you got anything?
No, sir.
James, you got anything?
Just a quick information for the rest of the council that wasn't in our meeting the other day. AMIC, uh, who does our insurance for the town, is changing how we do our cybersecurity insurance, and we have to meet a new criteria, or we basically don't get any cybersecurity insurance. And so we've had a meeting with our outside IT consultants this past week, and the recommendation is that we bring a specialized consultant in to help us find our gaps and fill and write the policies and stuff. And so we're starting the process of trying to do that interviewing now to figure out what that is, but just be looking for that, I don't, I don't have a, a cost of scale yet, but it's something we're going to be forced to do. It's not, it's not a want to, it's a have to, because...
So, we'll, we'll get something that won't be the full amount, right, the way I understood it.
So the, if we, if we fail the, um, their questionnaire, for lack of a better way to put it, they give us two hundred and twenty-four questions we have to answer on our, on our policies and procedures for IT. If we fail that, then we only get fifty thousand dollars in coverage.
Right.
Right now, we have a million dollars in coverage, that does not need a vessel to be out there, but, um, but what'll change going forward is, um, there'll be different levels based on how well you qualify.
Right.
And what we don't want to be is at the bottom end. So, and, and we, we're actually have done really, really well with a lot of it, but there's a lot of it, we, we just don't have the expertise, so we're going to have to bring somebody in to help us. So that's, that's one to give the council, so when we bring it up, we're going to know what we're talking about. And the fire department's moving along, making calls, and, um, the lights and the stuff are in for the trucks, and I don't know if they got dropped off this week or not, but that was the plan, to start getting them out, uh, Huntsville to get them outfitted.
Good. Want to go back to anybody?
Mr. Mayor, could I offer through things real quick? Piggybacking off of Mr. Carpenter, uh, we had a conversation, we were speaking with Jake Roth, I'm the city engineer, on Friday to get what we need to resolve, uh, with the way, with the water department, that matter, and, uh, what the next council session, have something to present for the council to consider. Second, piggybacking off, Councilman Mann, um, just received, Christie, who's, I believe, in Tuscaloosa, she emailed us the, um, questionnaire, and so we're gonna, Tom and I are going to assist with that, but also make sure that the requirements and employee handbooks, piggyback off that.
Right. We're gonna, if you go through that, there's actually about seven procedures that we need to document, um, maybe more, maybe less, um, and so some of them are clearly identified in there, and some of them are sort of implied, and so pulling out the what's implied and then helping us get the language right that fits our needs, is, is there's going to be a lot of paperwork on that.
Tom and I...
We, we just recently undertook something similar with a title company, and every year, cybersecurity, I mean, it's, it, it costs more money, it's, because there's more claims, and, and in fact, in our title company, the company that provided the cybersecurity pulled out completely because they were getting, because, because there, it's such a, it's such a problem that, that we want to make sure, you know, I think what, what the insurers are looking at is that, that, you know, the procedures that are in place here are, you know, good enough, and so we want to make, if they're not right now, we want to try to improve what we can before we...
So, um, try, we, we're looking at two companies that we know of right now that provide the consulting services to, services to help us answer, because a lot of those things we don't know, we're not experts in. When we have those meetings, would you all like to be included in sitting in on those?
Yes, if you'd love us, because what we...
If you can be, because it's going to be scheduled, it's going to be a fun thing, of course.
And even if it's called in.
You've got to work to our schedule.
We're actually doing that this morning.
But, um, yeah.
I've got my part, I've got my partner back, so...
It was, it was real interesting sitting in with our, um, IT company that we outsource to now, we're pretty good shape, but we don't have a lot of the policy procedures that we're, our following documented, which is part of the problem.
You're doing it, we just can't, it's...
We're doing, some of it we are, and some of it we're not, believe it or not, I was surprised by some of the things we're not doing. So, um, we're getting there, but I think that would, especially, and I hadn't thought about your role in this, but you're exactly correct, you need to be involved in helping us with the handbooks and the procedures, so you need to hear what they're proposing as well.
What they say, y'all...
Yeah, you do, you need to be a part of that.
We want to make sure that what the employee handbook requires allows the city to get the highest policy, you know, policy.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing that, that we always, you know, want to make sure of too, on, you know, on, on our end, is that, let's say you get a million dollar coverage, well, what are we doing, we need to make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing for that million dollar coverage to be in effect, because that's a question I ask every year, about even if we have the policies, if you're not doing X, Y, Z, then they deny you claims, so we want to make sure that there's training and all that kind of stuff for, for everybody to make sure.
And offline, there, there's a part of that, that we ought to write a procedure for how we handle something in case it is an event, and I can explain what I mean by that offline. Rather eye-opening, um, some of the thing that, if you all got leave, come talk to me, I'll tell you what I mean by that.
Okay.
But I want to keep that offline for now, if that's okay.
She, she emailed us, the policy, let us, let us take a review out, and let us holler and coordinate.
Yeah, there's different sections on all those questions, different, different.
We'll dig into that. The last thing, Chief mentioned, I think it's across the news right now, just, uh, obviously there's a, a situation Huntsville, and I know that Owens Crossroads is expressing all of the proper sentiments, and, uh, that my understanding is these guys are supporting HB day right now, so, before I mention that, have it reflected in the minutes and probably in the...
We're here to support, city Huntsville, and they're in need of that. Going around the public here, Sartre, you have anything?
Yes, for those who don't know me, my name's Kenny Mitchell, I've lived in Owens Crossroads about thirty-two years now. My property is located between Goody Two Shoes and Hills Auto and a joint spot supposed to be Rantico. I've come to every planning committee meeting since twenty nineteen, when that was proposed, and voiced my concerns at all the meetings, uh, unfortunately, my concerns have come to pass, uh, my property's become a watershed for Rantico. I'm getting in a desperate sit, situation there, I can't walk in my backyard because of water, my septic system hasn't worked properly since January. I've been promised repeatedly by, uh, Cameron, by Pete Kelly, by Terry Cantrell, that they are going to take care of the situation, make sure that I don't have that problem, nothing has happened. I had Jake Roth come to my property week before last, he said it was a terrible situation. Nothing's being done, I'm getting desperate, my options are becoming limited.
That's the first I've heard of it, so if you'll leave your name and contact information, I'll work specifically there, need to try and resolve that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I need somebody to back up what they're saying.
Right.
I've been promised repeatedly, I even had an engineer that I know, this engineer for Huntsville for twenty years, uh, come out and look at it last May, and he said at the very least, a berm and swell should be put there, and he wasn't sure if that would work. They half-heartedly tried... Uh, they half-heartedly tried to put a berm and swell up, but that just made my situation worse, so, yeah, I need some kind of action.
If you'll see me after the, the meeting, you give me your contact information, Mr. Mitchum, we'll get back where you're at.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sir, do you have anything?
You pointed me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Well, I do, I, I don't know the physics exactly where it belongs, but it's the only place that I knew to come.
Okay.
Y'all are involved in politics, and I've got an idea that I think might help our country out. It's, uh, it involves, it, it's, you, you could call it a local, uh, the effect, the effects would be local, because they would affect every constituent of yours that's in this room or in this community, and I would like to share that with some people who are more knowledgeable about how to handle the type of situation that I would describe, to maybe advance it politically. Uh, I don't think, this is not something that can be resolved right here in this city council.
Right.
But if it were, if I could get y'all to somebody, maybe just even one of your council members.
We can set a work session up for you, come back and...
Sir?
I said, we can set up a work session for you, and you can come back and address what you want to address for the whole council.
So I think that would be great, because if I could get your support, and, uh, there was a, an intelligent, dedicated group behind what I have, if it's a good idea, might not be, I, you know, I, I, first time I've ever thought about talking with anybody politically about anything very much. So I'd appreciate if you do that.
Yes, sir. Do, do these ladies have your contact information?
I, Ms. Carpenter and I know each other, and I've met this lady over here, too, in your offices, so I think I can manage to be available whenever you can give me some time. Thank you.
Let's work that out. Yes, sir. Young lady, do you have anything in the back? Okay, do I have a motion?
A motion?
Got a motion in adjourned, do I have a second? Second from Scott, first from Terry, all in favor? Thank you all very much for your service.